Welcome to Campaign 2024 in Mansfield. I'm Steve Cassio and we are covering the Mansfield ISD Place One School Board Campaign. And to my left, that would be your right, would be Karen Marcucci, who is my co-host. Welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
How many years did you spend on the school board?
Like I said, it depends if you do COVID math or regular math. I mean, it's technically nine years, but I think it was 900 when you throw in those COVID years.
Well, good, good. And in the studio today, running for Place One, running for reelection for Place One, the incumbent is Michelle Newsom. Welcome to Campaign 2024.
Thank you so much. I'm glad to be here.
Okay. And help me out. How many years have you served on the board?
I have served nine years currently.
So you've done three terms.
I have.
Just like, just like Karen. Let's just go ahead and start. Introduce yourself as if no one knows who you are. And include in that why you're running for reelection.
Sure. My name is Michelle Newsom. I'm a current board member. I've been very grateful to be able to serve nine years for Mansfield Independent School District as a trustee. And I do believe that the word trustee is a very key word in that title because we are entrusted with lots of things that matter. So children's, their lives, decisions, education, staff, teachers, buses, you name it, everything that goes along with that.
Custodians?
Custodians. There you go.
All right.
And we are also entrusted with taxpayer dollars. And so lots of important things to go there. In my, in my day job, I'm a nurse by trade and I'm president of Surepoint Emergency Centers. So I run emergency centers across Texas. I have 13 locations currently, but our headquarters are here in Mansfield. So I work locally. I still enjoy nursing and everything that goes along with it. That's my passion. But I did go to school at Texas State with an early childhood education degree for many years. I did not finish my student teaching is where I stopped. I had, went on bed rest for a pregnancy and never finished up and then turned around and went to nursing school and all the things that ensued brought me to this place. So over the years, I have, I come from a family and then married into a family of educators and healthcare providers. So it's, it's kind of a legacy that we, that we do. It's, it's what we do as a family. My father-in-law is Vernon Newsom, who was a previous superintendent. And so I, I grew up in Mansfield, not in high school days, but you know, right after we got married. And so I can remember driving down farm roads and looking at the land for legacy and looking at where Lakewood was going to be built and elementary schools, you know, many years ago, planning what that, what that picture was going to look like, what his vision was for MISD and what the future beholded at that time. So I was very excited when my two children were of age that I got to finally be a Mansfield Tiger. Because all the years before that, we had to be who, whichever school we were attending for whichever sport and we had to, we were just Mansfield. And we had to, we, we didn't have to, but we got, we got to cheer for, for whatever team we were representing that day. And so when my children were in high school, they attended Mansfield High School. So we were a Tiger. I was a band booster mom. And I think you and I actually took some trips together many times.
Yeah, I was a band booster dad, too.
We know, we know. And all that entails until one o'clock in the morning. And a volleyball mom and PTA moms and cooking cookies and volunteering and things like that. So I've spent many, many years volunteering in the district. And in, you know, when it came time for an opportunity like this to come up, I was very excited. And at that time, I really wanted to ensure that there was great things going on in the district and we maintained what was, what was being worked on. But I also had a legacy that I felt like I was trying to behold for Vernon. And that's really important for me. And so that was really a, a big part of my decision to run initially. Obviously, once you get in and you get, you know, elbow deep in what's going on in the district and you understand more and you learn about what it means and how the systems work, you, you have, develop a great passion for it. And you want to be able to help and fix things. And so as time goes on, it's, it only grows, your desire to serve in those capacities. And so that kind of leads me to where I am today. We've had a lot of challenges over the few years. So COVID and such really were some challenging times, as Karen can concur. That was, that we, there were some, there were some difficult times there for us. My funny story, I always say, man, I've never had a threat against my life, but when I was on the board during COVID, I had threats against my life. And so it's really amazing.
It ages you.
Yeah. It ages you. These gray hairs come honestly. And so, you know, I really feel like we have a great thing and we have even more challenges coming up and different challenges than there were nine years ago. And so that's where I feel like I can really make a difference. And my experience right now leads us to this place that we're in right now.
Your introduction brought up about 20 questions in my mind, but I am actually going to yield to my co-host and let Karen ask the first question.
Yes, because when you were talking about that, I think about that, too. How many, how much our community has changed. I think about how much being on the school board has changed. And I really think about, too, even how running for school board has changed. Because when I decided not to seek reelection, it was still in the good old days where you got a little bit of money from your friends and family and you were able to run on the money that was collected there. There weren't all of these outside political action committees. There weren't quite the involvement. So I was just curious a little bit about what you're doing differently this election cycle as compared to your previous election cycles, because we've seen those changes, but also our community has changed so much. We're so much bigger and so much more diverse than we were. So how has that changed things for you?
I would have to say that I, I'm still in that same place. I'm, I'm still, you know, asking for donations from friends and family and my mom and stuff. And so I'm still working off just small amounts of money. I will say that the Arlington Board of Realtors in my very first election and then following elections, and even this one, are, are game changer for me. So they usually are my biggest donations that I get into my campaign. And they're the ones that allow me to buy signs, the things that are the big, you know, big expenses for campaigns. I will say that something that's a little bit different is make, there's, man, the first time I ran, I think there was maybe two forums and people that wanted to email and talk to you. And I think this go around, we're up to like 14 or more. And that doesn't even count, like the questionnaires that come to us that need to be submitted for groups or organizations and things like that. And so that's very, very different. I think, I think I do it just a little bit different. I make sure that I talk to all the people because I think it's important for them to understand where, what your values are, what you stand for, and what you've done in the past and who you are. But also meeting people out in the community, we spend a lot of time at school events and community events with me and my family, but making sure that we're door knocking and stuff like that. Those are things that I didn't necessarily do as much. I've always done them during campaign time, but doing them a whole lot more in these, in these past few weeks than, than ever before. So.
As a school board trustee incumbent, what achievements, maybe initiatives, maybe policies are you most proud of during the past nine years?
Wow, that's a, that's a huge list. There's so much, there's so much. Some of the things that come to mind in no particular order, but hiring Dr. Cantu is one of the greatest achievements while I was on the board. She's amazing and has really been able to navigate these, these troubled and bumpy waters over these, these few years and has put together a really incredible team as well. And so to watch the team in action with her is, you know, really an exciting thing to be able to be a part of. I don't think anybody quite understands how much time and effort and thought that goes into, to everything that that happens as, as they move through whatever, whatever's going on at that time, good or bad. I will say that being an A-rated district is one of the greatest things that has happened. It brought us a lot of notoriety, as well as it really helped us to recognize our teachers and our staff for all the great work that they've been doing for such a long time. So that was really a great thing. I believe we're still an A-rated district. I firmly believe that is because I think we're even better than we were before. They just changed the needle. So saying that we're now not an A-rated district, I kind of take, I kind of take offense to because they're now testing us and holding us to a different level and numbers. And so it's, it's different.
Elaborate on that a little bit, too. Just, I would like to make sure our listeners understand that, that some of the rules that were put in place to become an A-rated district were actually implemented after the data was already collected. So we didn't even have a target to work towards.
Yeah, we, there was no, it's like taking a test and not even knowing that you have to finish the test or how many questions there are, or how it's going to be graded. It's, it's been really unfair. And I think it's mostly been unfair to our educators because we have an incredible curriculum. Mansfield is a place where we've, we've built our own curriculum and something to be very proud of. And I think that we have amazing educators. And so for them to kind of move the needle for them is, man, unfair doesn't even seem like a strong enough word for it. Because the hours and the time to what they put in and pour into students every day, you know, I just, I think that should be, that should be what's broadcast across the universe about what MISD is.
Well, I was wondering a little bit, too. So, you know, one of the reasons I decided not to run for reelection is that I'd kind of accomplished the things that I'd set out to do. I was really interested in school choice and providing more opportunities for our kids and increasing the STEM education, hiring superintendent, you know, some of those things. And I'd kind of accomplished that. And then I have twin daughters that were seniors and I really wanted to have a moment to enjoy their senior year and not serve on the board. I was just wondering, are there some other milestone things that you would like to achieve in this next term that are really motivating you to run again? When, you know, what that might look like?
Sure. Right now, I think the biggest broken piece of what we're dealing with in education here in Texas is our state funding. And while I think that was important on the very first day that I was a board member, it's so much more important today than it's ever has been. And so I will say that being experienced, understanding what that means and what some options could be for us and being a seat at the table with decision makers feels really important. And so understanding and not being afraid to speak about what's going on, stand up for what's important, speak to the right people and help to make those decisions, I think is, is really game changer. And so I would tell you right now, that's, that is very much my motivation. I think MISD does great things, but I do believe that I can be a very important part of the puzzle and tool to help achieve that goal. Because that's one of the things that experience brings.
So then could you elaborate a little bit more about the bond election that will also be on the ballot and tell us your views on that? Because I think that's an important piece of what you've mentioned.
The, the bond couldn't be any more important for us at another juncture. While we've had other bonds that are important, this one really seems to be a little bit different. It feels different. It feels different in the community. It feels different for our schools and our students. I'm proud to say that the bond right now, this is something that's going to touch every single student on every single campus. I love that we took to a committee to make some decisions about this and it wasn't taken lightly and that we were able to really get some information and get a lot of people in the room to make the right decisions. And there's lots of options out there and make sure that we did touch everybody and everything. And this point with our funding issues, the bond will help us to be able to move forward for some things that we really need to get taken care of in the district and will help us a little bit financially go to these next steps. Because these next few years, there's, this is a big deal. And those who aren't paying attention or those who are paying attention in surrounding school districts in the state of Texas, most of these folks are adopting deficit budgets, they're having layoffs, they're doing all those things. And we've got to, we've got to be creative and we've been creative, but we're at a whole nother level of what this looks like financially and how to make the right decisions and quick. These are not going to be easy choices for how to take next steps. And so these, this bond will be game changer for what's going on. I myself support the bond and will be voting for it because this is, this is the next step. This is our future. And I believe that everyone in this, in Mansfield ISD will benefit from this. I believe homeowners will benefit from what this looks like. It will keep our property values up. There's, there's no end to it. So.
Without raising taxes.
Without raising the tax rate.
Which is what I keep reading.
It's critical, too, because on the ballot, they have some kind of confusing language regarding that. The way that the rules have been updated, it states that it's actually a tax rate increase, but it is not. So it's very confusing for the voter if they're uninformed.
Yeah. So we're really hoping that folks will take an opportunity to attend some of these bond presentation meetings, Facebook Lives, go to the bond website on MISD's website. There's lots of great information, you know, knowledge is power. And so we want to make sure that they, the message and the information gets out there.
Dr. Cantu has committed to, to come on the podcast as well to explain all five of the propositions. And I look forward to talking to her about that.
Excellent.
Can you discuss any specific instances where you've advocated for the needs of underserved communities within our district?
Wow, I think that's something that I advocate for with every decision and every vote that I've ever made while serving on the board. There's nothing that doesn't touch, that we do that touches one student or one kind of student or one need of a kind of student. These are multifaceted decisions when we make about budget and for policy. And so those are, that, that is all rolled into one. I'd, I'd love to tell you that I stand up and think that I'm going to fight for rights of one thing or, or, or an agenda. But I serve agendaless on the school board and in, you know, I, I want what's best for every single student, every single time. I believe that education is the great equalizer for us. And so it is for me and has been for me in my lifetime. And it's so important for every other student as well. And so I, I feel like every day that I serve on the board, I'm fighting for every student.
It's an easy answer to an easy question.
It is.
There you go. Karen?
I would like to go back a little bit. We had talked a little bit about the campaigning and we talked a little bit about donors, but we didn't specifically talk about political action committees, although you did mention the Arlington Board of Realtors. Are there any political action committees that are supporting you and your campaign this election season?
Arlington Board of Realtors is the only political action committee. All my other donors are private donors.
Thank you. I appreciate you clarifying that a little bit for me. And I was wondering a little bit about how things are going. You're a more experienced trustee and you're working with some newer trustees. Is there any advice that you could give to people about how to navigate being a trustee on a board? Or how have you been able to navigate that with newer trustees? Because you talked a little bit about some of these larger issues that are even bigger than Mansfield ISD. And it's sometimes difficult to familiarize, familiarize yourself with the district as a whole, but then also trying to implement that advocacy piece, understanding who to talk to at the TEA and your state and, you know, federal reps on different issues and things like that. Would you like to talk a little bit about that growth process or how you're doing that? Give advice or?
I don't even know if you call it advice, but I think that when you first get on the board, you're trying to understand the processes and stuff like that. And Karen, you were my, my, my biggest mentor, first getting on the board and held my hand and showed me the way and did all those things, as well as the other board members. I feel like I was really supported. So over the years, one of the things that we've done as a board is kind of come up with kind of a mentorship program for new board members and kind of a way that we're going to make sure that everybody can kind of get up to speed quickly, things like that. Working as a team, I mean, this is like no, like any other team that you work on in your workplace, in, in your family even. And so we have to be able to work together. And so doing all those things, which means sometimes spending time with them at events and going to coffees and talking, and it's okay to disagree and it's okay to agree. You know, so some of those things just come with time and experience, but you have to be able to be comfortable in your own skin. And you have to be willing to speak up and feel that it's okay to speak up about things that may not match everybody else in the room. And with that also comes the ability and the confidence to speak to legislators and to speak to other surrounding school board members and to speak at conventions and to speak to other superintendents and to speak to state Board of Education folks. There's, there's so many people that are a piece of the puzzle. And being an advocate for students, not only MISD, but we have to be willing to have a seat at the table. And if you're going to get a seat at the table, by golly, you better, you better speak up and know what you're talking about, because these are important decisions and you may not get another second. You may only get one chance to say something that's going to be impactful to those folks. And so I will say that that's something that's been very different across the years is as you get a little more confident, as you get a little more understanding about what goes on and you start building those relationships. I can remember going to our first, you know, leadership conference to get, and you just knew all these people. And I was like, how does she know all these people? But you know what? The very first thing that I learned was she introduced me to everybody. She didn't just, you know, I wasn't just the tag along. She introduced me to everybody and I still know those people and those are still meaningful relationships. And now I do the same. I bring new board members along and introduce them. And you serve on committees and you meet people and you call and you follow up and, and you make sure that you have a seat at the table.
Aside from the fact that you are the incumbent and your opponent is not, how do you believe your experience as a trustee sets you apart from your opponent?
So in my day job, I'm a president of a company and run operations and run huge budgets and, and deal with lots of money and the things that go on for a working company. And as we know, MISD is the largest business in Mansfield, Texas. And so this has to be run as a business. And so if, if the role of a school board trustee was to be an educator, then we would have a board of educators. But we don't, because the administration and the teachers, they all went to school to do this job. That is their job. My job is not to tell them how to do their job. My job is to make sure that policy is correct, that we have a good superintendent and that we adopt an appropriate budget and take care of the finances to take care of the, of the students. And so I believe that that is the part that I bring to the table. I manage lots of people. I manage lots of dollars and I know how to look at what that is. I'm also not afraid to make a tough decision and a tough call in a critical situation. And I think some of those things are really, really important, especially moving forward. And for me, this will be the most important term that I serve.
Let me do a follow-up on that then. If, if the board is policies and budgets, do you think the board should be reviewing library books?
I do think that there's a place for all of us to, to learn about what's going on in the schools. And if that is part of the policies, then I do believe that it is part of what we should be doing. If you, I feel like you know what our policies are for board, for books and things like that. And so there's a rubric. And so we are not, I would love to tell you that we all sit and read all of these books. That's obviously not what happens. But we do review the list and we do review the rubric and we do understand that. The rubric and such, the policy is what we vote on and then we can support what that looks like. So while we are not reading every book, that is not the situation, we are making sure that we are reviewing what the policy is about the books.
I would like to touch a little bit on your volunteer opportunities or some of the volunteer experiences that you've had. I was just curious, what are, or what was one of your favorite volunteer activities to do? What is it that you really enjoy the most when you volunteer hands-on in the district?
I would have to say that my, my, probably my two favorite volunteer for opportunities for the district is at Sarah Jan Druko Academy of Early Learners. I just, just to see what goes on there is so impressive. I mean, I have a unique experience because, you know, when we were on the board, we got to kind of make decisions and pass, you know, vote to be able to, to build that, that academy for early learners. We got to look at the blueprints and kind of understand what it all meant and, and watch it kind of actually come together. And then to see it come to fruition is, is really amazing. And so it just really tugs at your heart when you're there. And to see the beginning and the end. And so to be able to go, go there and then see graduation, kind of that beginning and end part, kind of makes it all come together for you. I don't know, I still really enjoy volunteering for, you know, being, being, being a band mom and things like that that are actually related to that part of it when you're in there and it's 11 o'clock at night, you're on a bus with 60 students and, you know, we're unloading and sweating and somebody's crying and all of those things. I still think that that part of it is part of what I still really enjoy in being there with the students. I did have a recent opportunity to be able to see some students that were working on a, with the city and they're learning about the city university.
Yeah, MIMI University.
I think that's what it's called. And so they were in DC.
I'm a graduate.
I was in class one.
And they, but they have it for, for high school kids.
Yeah.
And so, so impressed with things like that. Obviously, we always love spelling bees and things like that. But to be able to watch them kind of apply that and get to go and watch them sit down with, you know, congressmen and kind of hold their own and, and what that looks like in the way they carry themselves just makes you swell up with pride about what we're doing right in this world. Because some days we all question what is right in this world. And we are doing it right. So those kinds of things where you get to be with the students and interact with them is really my favorite part.
We're down to our last couple of questions. And you mentioned about 20 minutes ago in your introduction, the legacy that your father-in-law left behind. What do you hope to accomplish if reelected as a school board trustee? And what legacy do you hope to leave behind?
Ooh, good question.
That's why I'm the host.
There you go. I hope that people will know that you can fight for students and what's right and doing the right thing without having to have some kind of agenda. And that this can be very heartfelt, that we, we can do it for the right reason, that we're, we want to do the right thing all the time, no matter what. I hope that people can see that in this community, we do what we say and say what we mean. And we want to walk the walk and talk the talk. And that we are, that we're still a small community that is getting bigger, that really care about what we're doing. And that it doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be crazy and that people can do this for the right reason. You know, most of us are, are doing these things and serving on our own time because we want to do what's right and we want there to be, we want, we want Mansfield ISD to be great, but we want all these students to go out into the world and we want them to be great citizens and we want them to change the world. Right? And I think that's the legacy that I'd like to leave.
So along those lines, how hard is it to work together as a team? Can you talk a little bit more about your experience there? I mean, I'm sure that there's been decisions that have been made that you weren't necessarily 100% in agreement with, but you know, 100% in agreement with, but, you know, the majority of the board moved forward with those decisions. So, so can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. Being on the board is a little bit like being in the family, like being married. You don't, you're not going to always agree, but you're going to talk about what it is and you're going to stand your ground. Hopefully, decisions are led by data and facts. And then we do, we do what has to be done. I will say that one of the things that I do think is important when you serve on something like a board, much like being parents, is that once you make those decisions, when you come out in front of the kids, right? We're going to stand together and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to make a decision as a team and that's what it's going to look like. But don't misunderstand. There's not always consensus about what goes on. And I, I, I would hope so, to be perfectly honest. If I sat on a board where everybody agreed 100% of the time, all the time, we wouldn't be very effective. And so we really need to have a little bit of that friction to make sure, to put us in check, to make sure we're doing the right things. And so making sure that you can hold your ground, you know what you're talking about, you're willing to say when you don't know and ask questions. All those things are really important parts of being on a team, whether or not that team is your team of two with your, with your husband or whether or not that's your team of eight being on the board.
There you go. Was that a follow up or was that your last question?
Well, no, I have a last question.
Then ask your last question.
It's my favorite question. So one of the things that I enjoyed the most on the board was being able to participate in the student nutrition meals on a regular basis. So I want to know, what is your favorite meal that's served?
So I love Savvy's. And so I would, I mean, there's not a favorite meal, but they're, the stuff that comes out of there at Ben Barber is just blows me away. But man, Rita Denton and her team, I'm telling you what, those were not the meals that I've ever had in mind. Like I can tell you about square pizza and when it was burrito day, all day long, but that is nothing compared to what is out there right now, like homemade cinnamon rolls. Are you kidding me?
They do an amazing job.
They do an amazing job and they really want it. They want to teach kids about nutrition. They want it to be exciting. They want them to try new things. And I, I'm just, I'm just taken aback by what they're able to do and the amount of meals that they serve. They have an incredible team and they have an incredible leader. But, you know, Savvy's and their, what they're able to do now are culinary arts folks is that, wow, they're, they're super impressive. I've had an opportunity to have more meals than I can count there and I, I couldn't tell you that there's a favorite. I haven't had a bad one.
I have to admit, I've never been to Savvy's. I've talked many, many times about going. I know, I know, I know, I know.
It is worth it 100%. Check it out.
But I have, I, I have to also admit that my wife and I looked into going there this coming Friday, but they're not open on Fridays.
Yeah, they have limited hours.
It's an event. It's an event.
Okay.
So just like concerts don't come, whenever you want to go to a concert, you have to plan ahead.
Yeah.
It's worth planning ahead and having the event of eating at Savvy's.
It is.
Then before this year is over, I will go to Savvy's.
We got a pinky promise here. I see you.
There it is.
We got it.
Excellent.
Final statement. Do you want to say any shout outs, any thanks, any, your, your husband's here sitting right behind your, your shoulder there. Do you, any, any shout outs before we say goodbye?
Well, I have a, I have a great campaign manager here. You know, my family is, is really incredible and doing what we do in the committee, in the community, either for him with the city or myself in the district, it's, it is what we do and it is what we do with our kids. We want to make sure that we are willing to stand up and do, do the hard stuff that has to be done. So there's got to be someone that, that does it. So we show up, you know? So there's something to be said for showing up. And so I have a great family here that shows up for me. And so I would be amiss if I didn't mention my wonderful husband who shows up for me, as well as my children who help me every step of the way, even when they're not close for every little thing and even new extended family that helped me. And a mother-in-law that, that's really great as well. And so we all really care about this community and we care about the kids. And I'm, I'm really honored to be able to be able to do that. But I guess I would close with, I've been honored to serve for nine years on the MISD School of, School Board and I would be humbled to be able to serve another three years, to be able to finish the tasks at hand and to be able to move, move the, the monitor forward just a little bit here. And so I humbly ask for your vote on May 4th.
That's Michelle Newsom, running for place one for reelection, the incumbent, the nine year incumbent, having served three terms on the, the Mansfield MISD School Board. Early voting starts April 22nd, runs through the 30th. The election day is Saturday, May 4th. And Michelle, and I think I speak on behalf of Karen, good luck on May 4th.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having me.